And that was emailed to you guys earlier today, early this afternoon, but no open, no public comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um. I would like for Manager Foggan to join us.
Hang on, he's calling me, I'm gonna go check.
Member of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020 at 5:00 PM. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Vice Mayor Lingan Filter.
Here.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Watkins. And Councilmember Wade.
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, thank you very much. Tonight, we're very glad to have Mr. Jeff McNiven here from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints to provide the invocation. Thank you, Mr. McNiven.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful for the opportunity to come together as this Kingman City Council. We ask a special blessing to be upon each of these members who are here, that they may be able to conduct the business as before them. And those that are not, that they will be safe and protected and that they may join soon at a later date. We ask a special blessing to be upon our city, our county at this time of COVID and also uncertainty. We ask a special blessing to be upon those that serve us in the community, our servicemen and women who put their lives on the line for each and every one of us. We ask a special blessing to be upon those who are afflicted by the COVID-19 and we ask a special blessing to be upon their families at this time. At this time, we ask, we opened this meeting and we ask thy special blessing and spirit to be upon it and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
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 Thank you. Would you, would you please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 384310383 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. The first order of business is a call to the public and this is a virtual meeting and so in-person attendance is suspended and this due to COVID and this meeting will be held through technology as we're doing. Public comments were to be submitted in writing to the city clerk's office via email or by mailing them. And they were to be accepted up till 9:00 AM on June 1st. All comments will be shared with the council and made a part of the public record. Deputy Clerk Melinda Mouser, are you there and did we have any comments submitted?
No ma'am, there were no comments submitted.
Okay, thank you. So our second order of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, this item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. There are items A through I this evening, are any of, would any of the council like to remove one of the consent agenda items? Hearing none. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through I.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the consent agenda A through I.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Staley, we have a motion, a second to accept these. Melinda, do you want to do a roll call vote or just?
I, I've got it, but it's up to you.
Well, I think for this item, I'll just say all in favor, I. I.
I.
Any opposed, nay. Hearing no opposition, this, this item carries and motion carries unanimously. There is no old business, so we'll move to new business and the first order of business is guidelines for naming and renaming parks, park structures, memorials, and facilities. The Parks Team looked at several cities' parks and recreation departments' best practices to develop guidelines for naming and renaming parks, park structures, memorials, and facilities. At the February 19th, 2020 meeting of the Park Aquatic and Recreation Commission meeting, a motion was made to recommend to council the approval of the guidelines for naming and renaming parks, park structures, memorials, and facilities. The motion to approve these guidelines passed by a vote of 5-0. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. We, what we, as you recall, this is, was discussed, boy, it seems like forever ago, but finally got it, Mike had worked with his team, got it through to the Park Commission, obviously liked it, passed it on to you folks. Really, Mike is, and I am willing and able to answer any questions. I think that the information provided was pretty straightforward. So we really don't have a presentation other than to take any questions that anybody may have. If Mike has anything to add, I'll turn the, Mike over to him and he can add any comments.
Mr. Mayor Smith?
Mike.
Mike, your sound's muted.
Push the spacebar.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'd be happy to go through and answer any questions. It was in the question that was given to you, but I think it's like City Manager Foggan said, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the council for Mr. Mayor Smith or Manager Foggan? Any questions? I have only one. So right now, everything that we have is pretty well named, any, if, if anybody wanted to rename it, they would go through this process, is that right?
That's correct. That, or if they want to put a memorial or a structure in the park of any nature, that they would go through this process as well.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there any discussion among the council regarding this item? I would entertain a motion to approve the guidelines. I would entertain. I'm sorry.
Don't move if it wasn't already.
Okay, Counselor Mello Keener, thank you. I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Wade, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion or any discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second. I would ask that all in favor say aye, and I guess, Melinda, let's go ahead with the roll call vote.
Sure. Mayor Miles?
Yes, aye, I'm sorry.
Vice Mayor Lingan Filter.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Aye.
Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote and this guidelines for naming and renaming parks, park structures, memorials, and facilities passes. Item B is adopt a park and trail program. The city has had groups interested in adopting a park. After looking at several cities' adopt a park programs, the Parks Team developed the City of Kingman Adopt a Park or Trail Program. At the February 19th, 2020 meeting of the Park Aquatic and Recreation Commission meeting, a motion was made to recommend to council the approval of the Kingman's Adopt a Park or Trail Program. The motion passed by a vote of 5-0 and staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan or Mr. Mayor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, there's programs that we're really excited about that come along. Actually, was surprised that we didn't have this in place. This is actually a really great way to involve community members in using and keeping parks clean. Again, we expanded that, also the things like trails as well. And so we're, we're really excited to actually have this come forward. That in the staff, in the team report, that we, we have a number of groups that have shown interest in this and really this would be a big help to Parks Team as they look to try to keep parks clean and tidy and keep eyes on the parks and trails. So, you know, I'll let Mike chime in on this, but we're really, we really are excited about it.
Yes, there again, everything is in the pack and there's a questions and answers that will be on the website, so people that have questions can go go through that and see it on our website, it'll be on the city's website, on our page. And people will be recognized there as well as on our Facebook page. And we'll do a press release when we first start and we will have a at the, at a Parks Commission meeting. And we are really excited about this because it will get, we have a lot of people in our community that care about our parks. And we've had a lot of interest in this, as City Manager Foggan said already. And we've had several groups that are interested in it and we just think it's a great program. So, and we looked at several other cities and how they do it and we picked the best of everything. I think we've come up with a really, really good adopt a park program.
Thank you so much. Seems like a great way to engage community. Okay, are there any questions from the council? About the program? No, okay, that was pretty self-explanatory, Mr. Mayor Smith. So I would entertain a motion then about approving the Adopt a Park and Trail Program.
I'd like to move that we move forward with adopting the Adopt a Park and Trail Program.
Thank you, Counselor Staley, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson, we have a motion and a second to approve the Park and Trail Program. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I would ask that we have a roll call vote and all in favor say aye.
Mayor Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lingan Filter?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello Keener? Councilmember Mello Keener?
Aye.
Sorry. And Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wade?
Aye.
Thank you, I hear that we have a unanimous vote and the Adopt a Park and Trail Program passes unanimously. We'll move on to Resolution Number 5272, which is adoption of the fiscal year 2020-2021 Tentative Budget. The 2021, 2020 to 21 Tentative Budget as presented includes changes recommended at the budget work sessions on May 6th and May 7th, 2020. Any additional modifications made to the tentative budget tonight will be incorporated into the final budget scheduled for adoption in two weeks on June 16th, 2020. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. So really, I'm gonna turn the time over to Ms. Tina. As the staff report indicated, we have, after making the presentation to the council, made the changes and I'm, I, I just, you know, this, so much work goes into this, to this budget and the process. And before I, you know, I give it to Tina, I just want to thank her, her team, my department heads and their teams for all the effort and for the council for taking the time to walk and work through the budget with us. It really is a team effort. And again, I'm, as I kicked off the budget meeting with council earlier this, a few months ago anyway, want to tell you that we do have a balanced budget and we're, we're gonna have a great budget document that goes with this doc, with, with the budget as you become accustomed to and we are working on having our citizen budget as well. So with that, Ms. Tina, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. So this is a two-step process, of course, adopting our fiscal year 2021 budget. And this evening, as the mayor provided a summary, is the adoption of the fiscal year 21 Tentative Budget. So keep in mind that once the tentative budget has been adopted, we can no longer increase our appropriations. At the final budget process, we can decrease them, but we can no longer increase those appropriations. So I quickly want to cover the couple of modifications that were made during the budget work sessions to ensure that we captured those correctly. One of those was to move a portion of the Rancho Santa Fe Parkway TI project from fiscal year 22 back to fiscal year 21, which we did, that was $3.5 million. And then also pulling $300,000 in an economic recovery program and the facade improvement program from being listed as a capital project and being paid for through the capital projects fund, of course, with general fund monies, but reclassing those back to operating budgets. So both the economic development budget and the tourism budget were allocated pieces of those monies. And so the increase in appropriations from our recommended budget that was presented the beginning of May was $3.5 million. And so the total 2021 tentative budget appropriations is $222,754,251. And with that, I'll take any questions or?
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Maline, Director Maline? From the council? Good job, good job, Tina.
Thank you so much.
That was pretty straightforward and so at this time, I would just entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2021 Tentative Budget. And Resolution Number 5272.
I'll make the motion that we adopt Resolution 5272 to the 2021 Tentative Budget.
Thank you, Counselor Staley. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 5272, the adoption of fiscal year 2021 Tentative Budget. I would like a roll call vote and for all in favor to say aye.
Mayor Miles?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lingan Filter?
Aye.
Councilmember Mello Keener?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Staley?
Aye.
And Councilmember Wade?
Aye.
But the motion to adopt Resolution Numbers 5272 and our tentative fiscal year 2021 budget passes unanimously. The next order of business is FY20 CDBG RA Public Hearing and, oh, number two, an adoption of Resolution Number 5279. The City of Kingman is eligible for and intends to apply to the Arizona Department of Housing for fiscal year 2020 Community Development Block Grant Regional Account Funds in the amount of $801,740 $801,740 to undertake the following housing and community development activities as identified at the May 11th, 2020 public hearing, ADA barrier removal. The city intends to replace any non-compliant ADA curb cuts, curb ramps, sidewalks, and driveways in the vicinity of the intersection of Andy Devine Avenue and Stockton Hill Road, including nearby streets Johnson Avenue, Broadway Street, and Hall Street. As required by ADOH and CDBG regulations, the city council must conduct this public hearing to solicit comments or, listen comments on any of the proposed projects, therefore, to comment on any of these projects. Residents were provided instructions on how to submit written or audio comments prior to this public hearing. Any comments or suggestions received at this time will be taken into consideration and if necessary will be included in the city's FY 2020 CDBG regional account applications. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing, we have Bill Schilling who manages our CDBG grant for us and I believe that Bill is gonna walk you through what we I did want to let the council know, this, there was a submission by a local group that was asking for money, for the, some of the CDBG money for a project. We were notified, I received an email from Bill this morning indicating that the group did not have the required funding to move forward and so they have requested their project submission be removed from the process. As far as comments that we've received for, because of the public, because this is a public hearing, I believe all of the public hearing comments were really based on that project and I'm not aware of receiving any for our ADA project, but with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Schilling to walk you through our project.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling, where are you?
Good evening, Mayor.
Here you are, good evening.
And everyone, tonight tonight's presentation, I, I have to do this according to our guidelines, so I'll briefly go through our CDBG process. Tonight, we'll, we'll look through the application process. We will conduct this public hearing based on the number of, the, the very few submissions that we had from the public. We have two city projects that we'll go over real quickly. And then council will select, formally select the project that will include in the application this year. So where does the money come from? Basically, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development allocates CDBG money to each state in so Arizona receives their allocation and formulates a method of distribution on how the CDBG money is then distributed throughout the state. It, it basically sends it out to each of the councils of government. So then the COGS develop their own method of distribution. The WACOG region, of course, includes La Paz, Mojave, and Yuma. This year, Mojave County will receive just over $2 million. Once WACOG receives the money, they, they reach out to the communities and years ago, we came to an agreement, if you will, what is the best way to spend this money in our WACOG region? And we decided that it's easier and better to spend to have a two-year cycle, we could do more and, and better projects every other year and alternate the applications. So this year, Kingman and Mojave County will apply for funding, will each receive the $80740. Next year, Havasu and Bullhead City will apply and will, it'll be about the same. So we had, we conducted our meeting on May 11th. It wasn't, obviously wasn't very well attended, we offered it virtually, didn't get any response back in March. So we went ahead and held it in May. Two, two different organizations attended. The organization that the city manager mentioned was the Jerry Ambrose Veterans Council. They applied and then a private resident submitted a proposal as well. Neither one of those projects actually qualified, but the fact that the Veterans Council, they had applied for funding from another source. They were hoping that that funding would come through and therefore help make their project eligible for us. That didn't come about, so they kind of backed away, they will come back and see us the next round. So the next column and in your report, I'm sorry, the next slide and in your report is a table. The first column includes the two eligible and qualified projects. The next two columns, A and B, are options on how you'd like to spend that money. Keep in mind that we are allowed to use 18% of the grant for administrative costs. We've gone both ways in the past, we've used this administration money during the grant cycle. When a project is gonna have a larger impact on the community or if we find out in our estimates that we need the administration to be included, council has then gone ahead and foregone that administrative, that administrative 18% so that we can use it directly with project construction. So the two projects, like you mentioned, Mayor, the two barrier removal projects, and I only broke them out this way in case you wanted to jump ahead, I, I wanted to have more than one project on the table just so that we could have an idea of how the process works. But the barrier removal project at the intersection of Stockton Hill and Andy Devine, that's pretty straightforward. Our engineering department has done wonders with the two previous phases of this. We started, if you remember, at the top of, well, we actually started downtown at Fourth Street and went all the way up to Hall Street, both sides of Andy. Then the second phase, we started again at Fourth Street and went the other direction to Grandview. The second phase was, was just a wonderful The second phase was, was just a wonderful experience with not only the contractor, but our engineering department. I have to give kudos to Mr. Eric Sparkman. He was just unbelievable with this. And I've got to go back a screen, it looks like. So once you make your selection, we then again offer the public a chance to comment. But at this point, you can make your selection and we can move on.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. So, so we have no comments and no audio, so the public hearing can be closed. That's what it says. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And at this point, I would entertain questions from council for Mr. Schilling or Manager Foggan. Well, I have a question, which is staff recommends approval, but the key question here seems to be, do we need the funding for the administrative cost or not? Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor. And in just kind of where we find ourselves, you know, as Mr. Schilling said, the council, depending on the projects, have, have used the administrative fee for some repayment to the team's time and efforts. And then other times, they have allocated the entire amount to projects. We've talked about this, and our recommending for this round, based on kind of where we are with the economy and the fact that the CDBG rules allow for administrative fee collection, that, that we're recommending option B, which is we would take the administrative costs due to kind of the reduction in revenues because of the pandemic and the uncertainty of the economy in twenty twenty-one. In the prior project, we, we were able to waive that. But where we find ourselves now, it just seems prudent that we would make sure that the administrative cost of overseeing this project is covered by the grant as allowed by the grant.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Okay, are there any other comments or questions at this time? And I would entertain a motion from the council to approve, sounds like to approve option B that was presented to us to move forward into the next, would that, that would move into, is that the final vote on this, Manager?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution five-two-seven-nine, option B.
Of a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Councilway. We have a motion and a second to approve. To approve. I'll find it. Resolution fifty-two seventy-nine and approved option B. I would call for a roll call vote with all in favor saying aye.
Mayor Miles.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lincoln Filter.
Aye.
Councilmember Mello Keener.
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wade.
Aye.
We have a unanimous vote and that motion passes. Item C or E, which is the approval of community branding plan. I understand we're going to have to postpone this particular item until our next council meeting because it did not show up on the website in time for the public to have time to really see it and review it. Is that correct, Manager Foggan?
That is correct. Something in the system dropped the attachment. And because people didn't have access to the attachment, we're going to have to move that to our next meeting, unfortunately.
Yes, we were looking forward to that. Okay, so that takes us to department reports, and the first one is the zoning ordinance update. Manager Foggan.
Yes, so as all of the team knows, we've been actively involved in reworking and updating the zoning code. And so we thought this would be a great opportunity to kind of remind you about the project as well as update you on where we are. And so I'll turn the time over to Chris Young and his team to walk you through where we are so far in the project.
Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Thanks for the opportunity to present the department report. As Manager Foggan mentioned, the city signed a contract with LWC to update the zoning ordinance back in June of twenty nineteen, and staff's been diligently working since July on the zoning ordinance update with, with LWC. So LWC is invited to present the department report tonight to you, giving an update on the status of where we're at and really highlighting on some historic overlay district and historic preservation pieces. So with that said, I'll turn it over to our consultants, who should be on the line.
Thank you.
Do we have them? Belinda?
Yeah, they're there. They're just muted.
Push your spacebar or unmute yourself.
There we go. Got to hit the right button. Hey, everybody, sorry for that. Can you all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Roger Eastman with Lisa Weiss Consulting, a director with the firm, and really delighted to be with you here this evening. I'm just going to hopefully click the right button and share my screen with you all. So please let me know if you can see, see my screen. What we would like to do this evening is guide you through a quick introduction to why are we here, just picking up a little bit on what Chris introduced. Introduce the firm, Lisa Weiss Consulting, and Carl Ibrahim, the architect who's working very closely with us, give you a very quick overview of the signing ordinance update to this point. And then I'll hand off to Carl, and the real purposes of the evening are to talk about historic preservation and to talk about the expansion of the historic overlay district. And then we'll be on the line with you for as long as needed for discussion and questions. So just for a personal introduction, I'm Roger Eastman. I've been a planner in Arizona for twenty-five years. I used to work with the city of Sedona soon after incorporation. I worked with Carl and Flagstaff for a little over ten years. And I've been working with Lisa Weiss Consulting now as the director for somewhere over five years. With me on the call is Adam Pesakewicz, relatively new to the firm, just about a year with us. Adam comes from the East Coast and has got somewhere over five years of planning experience. And I'll introduce Carl here shortly. So why are we here? Well, as you heard, the RFP was issued for an update to your zoning code in December of two thousand and eighteen. And after an interview process, we were the fortunate team to work with you all. And as Chris mentioned, the final contract was approved in June of two thousand and nineteen. So we've been working on the project with your staff for about a year. We kicked off the whole project with a call in July. And then after a series of steps that I'll detail in a minute, we got down to submitting the administrative administrative draft zoning code, which staff has just about wrapped up their preliminary review on. So let's talk a little bit about Lisa Weiss. Lisa and I go back well over twenty years. She founded this firm, Lisa Weiss Consulting, where a planning and economics firm. She actually has a background as a CPA. So through our professional portfolio, we've integrated planning and economics in our work, although planning is really our bread and butter. And we've worked in well over a hundred cities throughout the U.S. now. Most of our clients are in California, growing practice here in Arizona. I was just noticing that we need to add a new red dot for Kingman on the far northwest portion of the state. We're working on well over sixty zoning and land development codes. And we have a small and mighty team with a tremendous amount of experience in multiple fields that all integrate into our planning practice. Now, we introduced Carl into our team because one of the questions that came up through the RFP process and one of the city's desires was the need to expand your historic preservation provisions in the code and consider the expansion of the downtown historic overlay district. Now, as I mentioned before, Carl and I go back a long time. He was the city's historic preservation officer. And as an architect, was uniquely qualified to fulfill that role. And he worked actively on the town site and landmark, local historic preservation districts in Flagstaff, and then also with the South Side National Register Historic Preservation District nomination. He now works as a historic preservation consultant back to Flagstaff and Kenford, Kenfidy. And he's done a lot of work in and around the Flagstaff area, as you can see on the screen, with a number of specific projects. So with that as an introduction, I'm going to hand it off to Carl. I'm going to stop sharing here and let Carl pick it up, and he will guide you through now the questions and issues associated with historic preservation.
Evening, Mayor and Council. How are you all doing tonight? Yeah, there we go. Everybody doing Zoom country, right?
Very well, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you very much. So my intent tonight was to give you a relatively short presentation on a whole bunch of material. So as a result, I will probably move a little bit fast, and I would encourage you to stop me and ask questions whenever you like, and I'd be glad to ask questions at the end. So there's basically three parts that I wanted to put before you to consider as you move forward with the zoning ordinance update. First, I just wanted to do some introduction to some basic historic reservation concepts that people oftentimes don't realize these are true. I kind of think of them as myth busting concepts that I want to to consider. Second, I wanted to talk about your, that. And lastly, there's some additional historic preservation tools that if you're interested in exploring, we could certainly help you do that. So the first thing that a lot of people do not realize, we think of historic preservation oftentimes as individual buildings or perhaps as districts. But historic preservation can also include historic sites like archaeological sites. They can include objects like your train. There are a lot of things that you can incorporate in as historic resources and decide to preserve. For example, in Flagstaff, we have a train, a old two-spot train that we put in our historic district. One of the things that's really important for you as a council to understand is that what Kingman would decide is historic is determined by you, the city council. It's not Shippo, it's not me, it's not other people. It's what the people represented by the council feel are important to your community. So some of the reasons why cities and property owners are interested in historic preservation for property owners, there's several good advantages. If you're extremely patient, you can get a federal income tax credit, which can be quite healthy. If you have a project where somebody's revamping maybe a hotel like Alan Allfeld does, he can get a fairly significant tax benefit by doing historic preservation work. If you're a little bit less patient, Arizona has a property tax reduction. There's quite a few federal and state grants that are available. But one of the other things that happens with historic properties is that they tend to have higher property values. And their property values tend to be more stable than nonhistoric districts. So those are some of the reasons that property owners are interested in historic districts. You know, for a city, obviously, it helps to promote community investment. The jobs that are created in historic preservation are better jobs. You don't have to do as much infrastructure because you're not working in greenfields. You're actually using your own infrastructure. And it's also a good strategy for affordable housing. So there's lots of good reasons why cities would be interested in historic preservation. And of course, as you can see here from a tourism point of view, heritage travelers are a much better type of tourist in terms of how long they stay and how much they spend. So one of the things that happens, and you'll hear this probably from constituents in your world, is that, well, if we do historic preservation, that means we can't do anything. I often describe this to people as, you know, we have to put Grandma's oil lamp in the window and light it up, and maybe I put that on a doily, and then that's the end of the building. That's all it ever does for the rest of its life. And that's really quite a bit of a myth. While that can be a part of preservation, that's really one of the four treatments. And you'll see here, I've listed off the four treatments. And one is preservation, which is just keep it the way that it is. And you have restoration, and these are like for the car crazy people, right? Restore a historic car. You put it all back to the way that it was. Very least popular is the reconstruction. And this is really done in districts where maybe a building of ten or twelve has been torn down, and you put the one back. But the one that really pays off for cities and for property owners is rehabilitation. This is where reuse of a building and redevelopment of a building to a new use really pays off. And the rules or the rules of the guidelines are extremely friendly for making old buildings serve new uses. One of the other things that happens in historic preservation, oftentimes you'll hear people will say, well, it's on the national register. So it's all, it's all taken care of. And to some extent, that's true. The listings on the national register, whether it's a district or a building or whatever it might be, does indeed protect those properties from the actions of the federal government and people using the federal government's money or licenses. However, if the project is not acted by the national register, this image here on the right is a really beautiful historic property in Flagstaff that got flattened one day. Just, I mean, went in the city, got a permit and tore it down. So if you are interested in preserving those things in Kingman that are valuable to Kingman, and you not necessarily trying to protect it from the state or the feds, if you're trying to protect it for yourselves or private property owners, then you have to accomplish that at a local level. You have to set your own requirements for what can be done and how it can be done. So just in summary, these are kind of the big points, and I put this slide in there, knowing that you get this in advance. It's really just a summary slide. So the next thing to talk about is historic districts in general. So when you create a historic district, there's, there's sort of three basic parts you want to have before you create or expand a district. You want to have an inventory of the buildings within the district. You want to establish a boundary, and you want to establish the guidelines. So the guidelines are really the what can you do items. This particular district here is the one that Roger mentioned, this is the town site district in Flagstaff. And this is the local district boundary, and it pretty much repeated the federal listing district. The federal district had a few little jogs in and out. There were some gerrymandering to get some people out of the district that didn't want to be in it. And then the guidelines were actually written by the neighborhood. The neighborhood got together, they put together a list of what was neighborhood and those things that they felt needed. So in expanding your district or creating a new one if you wanted to. So in your district, you have the district that runs right down here by the Beal Hotel. It's a fairly small district. This is actually very much like what Flagstaff did and what a lot of cities in Arizona did when the Arizona State Historic Preservation Office was working on getting these all going in kind of the late eighties, early nineties. You created a district that kind of hit the primary area of concern. But if you look at Kingman, you have plenty of area north of that. You have plenty of area to, I wrote west, but I think I meant east of that, that are of that that are good historic properties. You've got a lot of resources there that are valuable. And you'd probably be very interested in including those in your historic district. And one of the things that I noticed driving around your south side, which was really interesting, you got a couple gems sitting in there. There's some really nice old properties in there. So you might give some consideration to what you do with the south side. So in Arizona, historic overlay districts, you create an overlay district and you lay that on top of your zoning map. And everything underneath it stays put. And the historic overlay adds those requirements from the zoning map and put a piece of smoky glass on top of it. Everything underneath it still there, everything's the same, except you've added the historic district on top of it. But what that means to you as a council and as a city is that because it's zoning, it has a relationship to Proposition 207 in Arizona. So you'll find that, like any other zoning case, you have to consider what your responsibility is under 207 and what your liability is under 207. On the district that I mentioned to you in Flagstaff, the Townsite District, that was approved by the Flagstaff City Council about two months after Proposition 207 passed. The council decided to approve it anyways. The city did get sued. There were five property owners that sued the city. The city was successful in all five cases and we moved on. And now it's a real, it's been a really big success because this was a neighborhood that used to be sort of the land bank for developers. It was where developers went to look to get land and they would bulldoze the old house and put up new things. And what we've seen in the last 10 years since this district went into place is that the historic preservation people are buying that neighborhood. They're preserving the neighborhood and it's preserving its character and its value to the city. Some of the things that you can do with 207, and we can talk about this more detail if you're interested, is you have two, a couple of choices. Option number one, you get 100% of the property owners involved and interested. Option number two, you let anybody out that wants to be out and essentially you create Swiss cheese out of your district. Or you take on the liability for the zoning. So again, looking at the sort of summary page here, there's your district. You've got some great opportunities with it. You have resources that would make for a great expanded historic district. And you need to think about that as a function of zoning if that's where you want to go. So the third part of the presentation tonight is what are some other things that you can do if you wanted to make your historic preservation program stronger? So one of the things that a lot of communities do is a local grant program. In Flagstaff, they use a Port Shines Grant Program. It's a very low-key, locally-done grant program. The Heritage Preservation Commission approves the grants. The local historic preservation officer reviews the work and makes sure that it happens. And this is a really nice tool because what would happen a lot is you'd get a customer come into the counter and say, well, I want to put in vinyl windows. And the historic preservation officer could have a conversation with them and say, well, we've got this grant program. How about we chip into your project? We'll give you some money and you do wood windows instead. So it's a very effective program, relatively low cost. It can flex from year to year and so forth. So something that you might want to think about doing as well. Another tool that we can offer you is basically the landmarks overlay district. And essentially what this is, is going back to the overlay districts are a function of zoning. You have those three documents we talked about, the inventory, the boundary and the guidelines, right? But the other thing you have to do, the other side of the equation is you have to create a zoning district. You have to prove that and put it into your zoning code. And then you have to rezone the property. And so it ends up being a six, seven, eight step process to designate something as historic property. So what the overlay district does is it's basically an empty zone. It's ready and waiting to go. So that the guidelines are there, the boundary is the entire city of Kingman. And any property that wants to protect their property of their own choice simply raises their hand and says, put me in there. You do a quick rezon and it ends up being a two or three step process instead of a seven or eight step process. It's a good way to go. It keeps you as a city out of Proposition 207 discussions. Its drawback is that the property owner has to take another step because the next property owner could easily come and have that overlay removed. So if the property owner wants it to be perpetual, they need to record a CCNR and make it a perpetual item on the property. But it's still a good tool. In Flagstaff, we started with one house. We ended up putting the entire 62 acres of the museum in northern Arizona in there. We put these train station in the district. We've got probably 10 or 12 properties that we've put into this district now that are now protected individually. And it's been a really good solution for the city. The last one that I wanted to kind of review with you is the concept of cultural resource studies. So one of the things that happens in cities, and yours is probably exactly the same, is oftentimes we don't necessarily know exactly what we have. And so the idea of a cultural resource study is very similar to doing other resource studies, whether that's trees or slopes or water, horses, whatever it might be. The point is before you develop something, you ask yourself four questions. Is there, are there any resources on that property? Are they significant resources? Because it's one thing to be 50 years old. It's another thing to be significant, right? Then the third question is, will this project or proposal before us damage that resource? And lastly, what could we do to not damage the resource? So it's a good way for you as decision makers to make informed decisions so that often, and you'll see a case study here in just a minute. But rather than just say, well, it's an old junkie, this, that, the other thing, we'll tear it down. You'll know that somebody looked at that and realized, yes, it is important or no, it's not important. And a lot, the other thing that happens a lot is that owners of historic properties oftentimes don't even know they own something that's valuable. And so it's a good way for owners to be making intelligent decisions as well. So everybody who's making a development decision, whether it's the owner or the the planning and zoning commissioner, the council, all have a knowledge of what it is you're working with. One of the nice things about this is it ends up being just a part of your land use approval. It's not a development restriction, so it's not subject to 207. And one of the things that we did here in Flagstaff that I would recommend that you do as well is we created a multi-level system for doing cultural resource studies. And the idea was to make so that the amount of effort and thought that went into something was proportionate to the risk involved. So if there was a particularly valuable resource, you probably want to spend a little bit of time on it. But on the other hand, if you're only proposing to put a water heater in a historic building, you shouldn't have to do a three, you know, a 15-page study on it, right? So we created this multi-level way of doing this. It's worked out really well for Flagstaff. So just as an example, you know, this is the El Pueblo Motel here in Flagstaff. I don't know if you all have seen that before. I assure you that should you come traveling to Flagstaff, you'd rather sleep in your car. There's absolutely no doubt in my mind. It's better to sleep in your car. But it turns out that this El Pueblo Motel was developed by a gentleman by the name of Philip Johnson. And Philip Johnson was the guy who recruited the Code Talkers in World War II. And all of the Code Talkers were recruited out of this property. So when you look at this property and you go, yeah, it's kind of a junky CD $30 a night hotel. The truth of the matter is this property is not only important in Flagstaff history. It's not necessarily important in Arizona history. It's actually important in US history and world history. And you'd never know it standing there looking at it. And the only way you know that is by doing something like a cultural resource study where somebody spends a little bit of time doing some title searching and doing a little bit of homework on what exactly it is that we're working with. And this property is a really great example of a property owner who had no idea what he bought. And he came in and proposed bulldozing this and putting up a three-story office building. And once we explained to him what exactly he had bought, what it meant to US history and world history, he's hung on to it and he's hung on to it for, at this point, at least 12 years. And now finally, he's tried multiple times to get people to buy it and do the right thing by it. He finally said, okay, forget it. I'm stupid myself. So he's now going to be restoring the property himself and turning it into a boutique hotel. So for Flagstaff, we take a junky $30 a night hotel and it gets turned into a $500 a night hotel. All it took was to educate the person as to what he owned. The last sort of category of resources I just want to touch on is archaeological resources. And you know, oftentimes out in the woods where you don't know where things are, there's potshirts, there's whatever they might be that happens to be in your area that are buried. And we oftentimes don't look for them. And so the other category that you might really want to think about in addition to buildings like the El Pueblo, you might think about at least looking for archaeological resources with large tracts of land or develop. In Flagstaff, we thought about sort of, again, keeping the program reasonable. So we basically have this applied to properties that are bigger than about an acre. If they're less than an acre, we don't bother. We figure they're probably already disturbed. But you'd be surprised the number of resources that have been discovered in Flagstaff that are on vacant land and nobody knew they were there. So again, sort of a summary slide for you. And that is my quick 30-second overview on historic preservation. And I'd be delighted to answer any questions that you might have.
This is Vice Mayor Rick Feltzer. I have just a couple of questions. So it sounds like the landmarks overlay district. That's the first time I've heard of that, but from what I heard in your explanation, that sounds like something that, you know, maybe would be a good fit for Kingman. I don't think that you can solve or save every building in downtown. Like you said, there are some buildings that have some great historical significance and other buildings maybe are just old. So, right? And I wouldn't want to have to tell a private property user what to do with their building unless there was, it had been identified as having very clear historical significance, like the Hotel Beal. You know, there's so much history in that building. Under all these options, which one would allow a property owner to say, take a building that has been designated as having significant historical uses in the past and reuse it? So if you use the Hotel Beal, if somebody were to come and purchase the Hotel Beal and they would want to do something like not turn it into a hotel, but they want to make it into a multi-use building with some smaller modern apartments on the upper floors and maybe some commercial space on the ground floor, would that use be allowable or something?
Yes, absolutely. And whether that's allowed or not is really your choice as the city of Kingman. So if you wanted to, you could write your guidelines in such a way that, nope, the Hotel Beal has to be a hotel and that's all it can ever be. Or you can write your guidelines to say, look, we're interested in exterior appearance and the historic appearance and the use is much less concerned to us or of no concern to us. So we would tell people quite often, you can hollow the thing out and it meets the local ordinance. So it's really again, what is your desire as a city for the outcomes? One of the very common things that people do, cities do, refer to the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. One of the reasons for doing that is since 1966, they've got a lot of the good for cities and property owners to use as guidance on their guidelines. So were you to do that, the federal standards, use those four treatments that I mentioned earlier. The key one being the rehabilitation treatment, which would totally allow for commercial on the ground floor, offices, apartments or hotel above, any uses you wanted within the building.
That's good to hear. One of the challenges that we have in our downtown here, as you may have seen, if you've been into our downtown, is as we're trying to build up and revitalize our downtown, downtown Kingman is sort of the government services district and you have this influx of people that come in to downtown to work during the day. And at 5:00 PM, there's an exodus out into the suburbs. And so we need some more housing. And so those hotel properties that we've talked about would be great candidates for apartments or condos or something like that to allow people to live, work and play downtown. So it's good to hear.
And you have quite a, you have quite a bit of one-story commercial that could do with additional floors that have housing in them.
Yes, thank you for answering my questions.
Are there any other questions from council or comments?
Um, yeah, thank you. I have a few comments and a question. As our downtown is starting to really look at revitalization, a lot of people have concerns about what will happen to the history of downtown. We have very little preservation efforts happening now. I've been to several conferences where I'm almost embarrassed, you know, at a national level, when you go to a Main Street conference and they talk about preservation, we're not even doing the bare minimum compared to what other cities do. So I would really like to see us look through and find a way to preserve the history that we do have. And I'd like it to be a little bit more concrete than just an opinion on what is important and what isn't. So I was glad to hear you talking about doing research and really finding out what each building, what the history is. And I love the idea of including South Side because there are some really great gems down there. And they're just as important and they should be preserved as well. So I would like to move forward with something that is a great compromise for property owners. I liked what you said about it not being as restricting as people think it is. So something that, that keeps that in mind so that we can move forward and have progress in downtown, but still hold on to, to the great heritage that's there. So I'm wondering, it almost sounds like Flagstaff has both. They have the landmark and they have a historic overlay. Is that right? They did both?
Yes, we have, we actually in Flagstaff, we had the original downtown overlay district, which is very similar to yours. It covered a very small part of downtown. We then created the Townsite District, which is west of downtown and covers the residential neighborhood west of downtown. And then we created the Landmarks District, which is citywide. So currently Flagstaff has three local districts.
Thank you.
So was the study to determine the history and the, of the buildings called the Cultural Resource Study was, that was, was that what you discussed as the Cultural Resource Study?
Madam Mayor, no, there's a little bit of a difference there. So when you do the historic district, what you generally do is what they call a context study. And that kind of deals with it on a district level and a neighborhood level. Perhaps important buildings are identified, so forth. But for your downtown, it's clearly a district that's going to be important for you. The cultural resource studies are really associated more with development applications. So it's a way essentially to get somebody who's going to rehab a building. Let's say I was going to rehab the Beal Hotel. And for whatever reason, because I'm an architect, I decided I wanted to cut out the front of the building and put glass windows in there. You have mirrored windows. Part of the activity of that study is to ask, is that appropriate? Does that meet the standards? Is that what we want? So that's where the cultural resource study comes. It measures individual development applications. So your historic district, one of the nice things that you, your context was already set by your original district creation. When the shippo in your city worked out that district, they wrote a context for your downtown. So you know what about your downtown was important. And you probably have, if you don't have it in Kingman, the state may still have it, a broader inventory than what you actually uncovered in your district. But right now, my, my bet would be we could use your existing context to a little inventory update of your downtown and we would have all the parts necessary to expand your district.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, back to you, Manager Fogg again.
Thank you. I actually will turn it back to Chris.
Thank you. Uh, I actually will uh, turn it back to Chris uh, and his team to see if they have anything to add to to the report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Um, the only thing I would like to add is that, you know, I think this was successful. Uh, we 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 have completed the entire draft review. But we've really been hung up on whether to proceed or how to proceed with. Um, historic preservation ideas and or expansion of the historical overlay district. So based on based on council's feedback and you, Mayor. I think we have that direction. So we will proceed and come up with some some draft ideas. And then uh, I I will schedule another meeting with Council to to show you what we've come up with.
That sounds like a really good plan. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would have a question of of Chris if I could.
Sure.
Chris, uh, this is Vice Mayor Ringenfelter. We didn't touch on it tonight. It was it was in the backup documentation, though, in the presentation. Uh, discussion about form-based code. And in my research, uh, historical uh, overlay districts. Uh, can go hand in hand with form-based code and I want to know the revisions that we're doing. To our zoning code or zoning ordinance, excuse me, how is form-based code incorporated into that?
Chris, would you like me to take that?
Sure.
Uh, yeah, thank thank you for that question, Vice Mayor. Actually, this perfect segue tomorrow evening. Uh, Adam and I are doing a presentation with the Planning Commission, five thirty. To talk about uh, a lot more detail on the zoning code. And we will be talking about the form-based code aspect as well as signs and an overview of the administrative draft. And and Vice Mayor, you're absolutely correct. That form-based codes and historic preservation go hand in hand and have proven to be very, very successful across the nation. And if we work this correctly between Carl and myself and and our team. And the city, if we match the boundaries of the historic overlay district with the form-based code. I think the city will uh, see a lot of benefits coming out of that.
Great. Uh, so when we're talking about the incorporation of form-based code into the new zoning ordinance. Um, is that only going to be applicable in our downtown area? Uh, because in past conversations, I think we've talked about not only would it. Be uh, applied in their downtown area, but there might be some other areas in town where it would make sense as well. Um, and I don't know where we are with that.
Yeah, interesting question, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Um, we have written the code right now to include. For transect zones in the downtown, transect zones establish how. You apply form standards rather than use standards. Uh, we've also worked with staff and have suggested that the frontage standards, that is to say, the regulations that apply to the front of a building. Um, whether it's a porch or a stoop or some other kind of uh, design element. Could also be applied elsewhere in the city. And likewise, the civic space standards. So whether you're talking about a square or a plaza or a green. If there's an appropriate development elsewhere, perhaps as one of your. Future P Ds, for example, you could apply those standards there. We haven't taken the step of establishing what might be called a. Traditional neighborhood community plan or some similar term. We actually set up the whole process for applying form-based codes to greenfield developments or elsewhere in the city. Um, not really part of our scope, but we can certainly set up the framework for doing that at a future time.
Appreciate the information. I think the downtown area is by far. The most important. Uh, and what you're telling me is what is incorporated in the new zoning ordinance. The the form-based code elements um. Are are in downtown with your four transit zones. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's how we've mapped it out at this point. Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments or questions? Anybody, uh, any comments from staff or the manager?
Um, just uh, looking forward to having additional conversations after the planning commission takes a bite of this apple a couple of times.
Uh, yes. Thank you. That's all. It's a lot to take a bite of.
Yeah.
But it sounds very uh, very positive and and the direction that it's going. Uh, okay, then let's move on to the Wayfair T P T collections report. Manager Foggan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman.
Uh, so one of the things uh, that we wanted to report on. Um, is we've had a couple of questions with regards to how are we doing with uh, the Wayfair T P T collection? Uh, as you recall, the state legislature tackled um, kind of the internet. Uh, sales tax question last uh, in twenty um. Twenty nineteen and that actually went into effect. Where all um, online sales that exceeded a certain level had to submit. The sales tax for the specific um. States, in our case, uh, Arizona jumped in. It was started as a South Dakota. Started this conversation and a lot of states have followed since. And so uh, we wanted just to give an update on where we were or where we are. And a little bit of where we've come from on this. So uh, Ms. Tina has prepared a a. A a little report for you.
Great. I guess first, thank you so much, Mr. Foggan and Mayor and Council. Can you hear me and see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So as Mr. Foggan alluded to, we uh, the state of Arizona. Put put this into law in two thousand nineteen. So it became effective October first of two thousand nineteen. Now, we don't collect our sales tax until about a month and a half or so after. The merchants actually report on those taxes. So although the remote sellers and marketplace facilitators were required to. Uh, report and remit those taxes in Oc- for October, we didn't collect those until November and December. So you'll see below on this little uh, report, we began collecting those in November. It was a small amount. And as time has gone on, you'll see how uh, how those amounts have increased over the months. As it is no surprise, in January, there was um, a pretty, a pretty significant jump from the previous month. And that's, of course, attributed to Christmas sales. So uh, we would expect that not to continue uh, to to uh, we would expect not to continue to receive that sort of activity or collections ongoing. So through April, we've collected about three hundred and four or five thousand dollars. So what we know is that when we look at April's collections, that's actually March's uh, sales. We see a little bit of a spike. And normally, if we were to look at this, we would not have thought that there would be a spike. It's not a time of year that people spend a lot of um, money historically when we look at our retail sales anyhow. However, because the pandemic began to take place, we did notice a jump. And we are expecting May's collections and June's collections to also exceed probably where we are in April. So we're expecting by the end of fiscal year twenty to collect over five hundred thousand dollars in. Uh, in online sales or what we're calling the Wayfair T P T collections. And we have taken that into consideration moving into the fiscal year twenty-one budget for a T P T collections as well. So we do believe a portion of that might offset some of the loss in actual storefront retail sales. So uh, so really, I just wanted to make sure that we provided this information to you. And you know that we have taken this into consideration in our fiscal year twenty-one forecasting and revenue estimates. And we will continue to monitor and report as necessary or as you'd like to see these.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you. Um, any comments, any questions?
Madam Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Ringenfelter.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
Uh, is Tina still on the line?
I am.
Hi, Tina. So my question is if if Kingman at some point in the future gets a Target or or some other big place like that. Um, a physical location, but people buy online in Target, how does this whole thing? Work?
So because Target is already has a physical presence in the state of Arizona. This would, we are not collecting online sales from Target. So it's a physical presence, not in the city, but in the state of Arizona.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, this is Councilwoman Mello Keener. Are you there?
Good evening, Councilwoman. Yes.
I just want to say thank you, Tina, for getting this information. It's that's pretty good news, you know, under the circumstances. And thank you, Manager Foggan. I appreciate it.
You are very well. I actually believe the mayor is um, having connection problems. We just lost her, I think.
It's it's actually been pretty rough with everybody tonight, uh, Manager Foggan.
Oh, so it's not just my computer?
No.
No.
All right.
We had a pretty hard, pretty hard time hearing a few, a few conversations.
Yeah, uh, Carl, uh, our consultant was breaking up pretty bad. I guess he was for you as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, until the mayor logs back on, I believe it becomes the Vice Mayor's show.
Okay, you know, all I'll say is um, we'll move to department report, item C legislative update, Manager Foggan.
Thank you, uh, Vice Mayor. Uh, one of with uh. The craziness that's happened in Phoenix and our state legislature. We really haven't had much to report and um. We thought, well, kind of where we find ourselves. Would be a great time to pause and just give you a five-minute update on on really what happened at the legislature for two thousand twenty. And so I've invited uh, Colleen Haynes uh, to walk you through uh, what what we know happened at the legislature. And a little bit about what the future of the, at least what we're hearing right now uh, on the legislature looks like. So uh, um, turn the time over to Ms. Colleen to to give you an update.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Um, so uh, thank you, Manager Foggan. I think you said five minutes, probably gonna be more like two, but that's okay. Um, that, as the manager said, uh, there's really. No, no bills that we were tracking made it. They only passed eighty-nine bills out of a little over sixteen hundred. Um, we were obviously tracking and making some really good headway on some really important bills. They're they're done. They're dead. They adjourned last week. Every bill that was on the table is gone. Um, so all we're hearing right now is that they're going to come back for a special session. Um, just to handle some budget items and that is potentially going to happen in June. But there are no set dates as of right now. So e- every bill that we were looking at as far as, you know, the vacation rentals, that was going along really well. Um, you know, we were looking at, I talked with Chief Cooper the other day, um, a really bad bill that we actually talked about. Uh, when we, when it, when we had our legislative day, we talked with uh, Sunny Borelli about um. Uh, a asset forfeiture bill that was really damaging. We're glad that died. It didn't go anywhere. But the thing is, is we have to worry about it coming back um, next year. And was kind of, kind of wing it and see what happens with this this special session for the budget. So I I imagine I'll be back in, back here in July, talking to you guys again. So that's, that's it. I don't know if if anybody has any questions. There's surely not a lot to report.
I would have a couple, just one question, really. I've heard that there's going to be maybe two special sessions. The first one maybe to do the budget option and then one for uh, maybe some economic development related issues.
So there was um, an economic development bill that did pass. Um, and I will, I will kind of walk you through that. It's um. Just, it was a House Bill twenty-seven seventy-one. It's an extension of income tax credits for qualifying investments. Um, in qualifying facilities. Um, and I think a lot of it's with research activity. Um, so it's, it's just an extension of existing tax credits that encourage significant economic development throughout the last ten years. So that did pass. As far as two special sessions, I'm not hearing that. I'm not hearing any dates. There's, it's kind of conjecture right now is the governor will call them back in June to deal. Um, with with the fiscal issues and then after that, I'm not hearing anything else, but you never know. I think um, what we're also hearing is. The next legislative session, you know, there's an election coming up. Um, what we're hearing, what I'm hearing from the league and other elected people from around the state and other intergubs from around the state is that. The House will flip to Democrat. It will not be a G O P run state legislature anymore. Uh, and they're also concerned about the Senate possibly flipping as well. So that, so the makeup next year will look much different. And any sort of, you know, budget bills or whatever, they they they're going to have to work together, the the Rs and the Ds. Because they need two-thirds to get those budgets passed. So I think it'll be, it'll be very interesting, the special sessions coming up and next year as well.
All right, thank you.
Anything else from anybody?
I I will just report also um, on this, our our piece of legislation. Uh, I just want to let everybody know, I I guess, uh, just. Before I get into that, the mayor just text me, her internet, she lost all of her internet. So um. That's why we lost her. Uh, as far as our piece of legislation, just as a reminder, that was the fire district, city-run uh, or operated fire districts. And um, with those, uh, we are currently obvi- obviously didn't do super well in the, when it was introduced. Uh, it hit a brick wall with with uh, with a couple of people that didn't let it progress, unfortunately. Uh, but we are actually submitting that to the league in resolution, for their resolutions committee. To consider as something that we would ask the league to get behind. Um, the other piece of that, um, in talking with um, Tom. And Cole from the Dor- Dorn Group is that uh, we are also. Uh, I'm going to start reaching out to city managers uh, around the state to see if we can get. Uh, some other cities interested in having uh, at least support. Or having a conversation about it. Uh, because now what we're, you know, obviously with the pandemic and shortfalls in revenue. Uh, the feeling is that more cities are going to be interested in hearing and talking about re-. Possible new revenue sources. And so we're thinking that in twenty, in the twenty twenty-one legislative. Session that we can actually get some more energy and power and push behind what we've introduced. So uh, there, that continues to move forwards, just to let you know.
Also to follow up with that, um, Manager Foggan is, uh, that is, um, the mayor submitted that as a. Policy for the league to tackle as well. And so the league will be discussing that. Um, the meeting is this Thursday at two P M. And so we'll be calling in and I think the mayor will be presenting that. Um, as well as it comes from, hi, Mayor, uh, elected officials of of those policies to the league. And then the league actually backing those resolutions and pushing those through the legislature as well. So that will be interesting to see how that, how that goes on Thursday afternoon.
I'm back. Thank you, Colleen. That's exactly right. Our internet just went totally out. It it came back on. Anyway, um. Yes, thank you. That's this Thursday and we'll be sp- speaking with the league and and I hope we'll make a lot of progress in garnering their support too. Thank you.
I believe that's the end of our report, Mayor.
I'm sorry I missed. I'm sorry I missed part of that. Well, uh, okay, thank you, Vice Mayor, I think, for your part there and and um. I will let's go continue with announcements by Mayor, Council members and City Manager, limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports. Availability and attendance at conference and uh, seminars. Um. Manager Foggan, why don't you start that with the announcement?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, as has been our tradition, I do want to report on our census twenty-twenty activity. As you drive around in in specifically the the old downtown. As you drive around in, in specifically the, the old downtown, historic downtown area, you will see some, some new colorful signs that are up encouraging people to participate in the twenty-twenty census. Uh, love those new signs. Uh, we are currently ranked fourth in the state for reporting. So yay to us.
Yay.
So we're, we continue to do a, a great job. Our citizens have stepped up and really made us proud. And so uh, that's currently our, our, our report. And on our hard-to-count area, we've seen the numbers start going up. So our campaign uh, ha- is working uh, for the hard-to-count areas as well. So um, good news there. Uh, just wanted to report, as many of you have been tracking over the last couple of days, we have moved from talking about the pandemic um, to talking about civil unrest and protests. And I, I just want to report that uh, the scheduled protest today, at, and I just got an uh, email from the chief uh, or a text message from the chief that said nothing has changed. And so I'm happy to report that the protest has gone uh, peacefully and well. And, and our team of Chief Cooper and his team and all of the support folks, our partners, both at the state and local level, have really stepped up to help make sure that this, this has, has been a successful event. Need to thank uh, the mayor uh, for her help with this as well. It's been a lot of heat and a lot of questions and a lot of concern. And uh, I think our police department has done a absolutely fantastic job in stepping up and, and tracking this. Um, for those of you that have not heard, uh, really not too much incidents, uh, there was uh, a young person who thought it would be a good idea to drive past the crowd and point an airsoft pistol at them. Uh, that individual was, was caught um, and uh, faces whatever penalties of law that will require. And again, great work by our police department on that as well. Uh, so I think that's my announcements, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd just like to add my appreciation and gratitude to everyone that's working on this. And, and uh, I drove by today and, and it was a solemn and peaceful event that was going on. And I just really appreciate all the support that that our police department and everyone working with Chief Cooper has come together. And I think the community has taken a lot of, um, really appreciates that, that they are feeling more secure because of the way that it is being handled by our, by our team in the city. So, and, and all of our partners. So thank you. Um, Counselor Wade, do you have any announcements?
I have no announcements for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Nelson?
No, no announcements.
Okay, Counselor Mello Keener?
No announcements, Mayor, but I did want to echo the thanks that's going on tonight to you, in particular for the National Guard. I know you spoke with the governor and all your hard work to keep our city safe. The county, Sheriff Schuster, um, Chief Cooper, just, I mean, we really are coming together as a community should. And I'm really proud to be here and glad everything's going safely so far.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. We all appreciate it. And um, thank you. Counselor Staley, I think I passed you.
I have nothing tonight, but I would echo uh, Councilwoman Keener's comments.
Hmm, thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor?
No announcement, no announcement this evening, but I would also echo thank you to all of our partners, um, PD, local PD and all of our partners for all they're doing and to everybody that is committed to nonviolence. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And I think um, really, I have no further announcements tonight either. So uh, are there any council requests for future reports or updates?
Mayor?
Yes.
Since we are, I realize we're still in the middle of the COVID, but um, could we maybe take a look at actually getting back into face-to-face uh, meetings? The public comment, I'm hearing from citizens that they'd really like the opportunity to be back in front of us. Maybe what we need to do is rent um, the county again. And we can spread everybody out six feet away from each other there. Uh, it's big enough. We can make something like that work. We're not sitting on top of each other and the citizens can be around. Something for us to, I think, would, would be greatly appreciated by our citizens if we take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. I'll, I'll refer that to Manager Foggan. I know he is uh, thinking about how to reopen the, the council chambers to the public. So we'll add that to his consideration.
Thank you. Yep.
Okay, uh, hearing no other requests for reports or updates, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, just say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night.